Okay, then we have a work session. Okay. Call the work session to order. Discussion on water and sewer services and annexation of properties, Luanne.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, we had back, a couple of years ago, I believe, discussed with the residents on that little street that runs down back behind Zion School, the ball fields in there. We'd had, Mr. Bill Drew came forward and asked if he wanted to be hooked to the city water and sewer.
He may be high, Luther High.
Luther High, I'm sorry, yes. Um, I'm sorry.
It's a dimension thing.
Yeah, kicking in. Um, and so, we had the discussion at that time with all the residents out there, the six property owners. Um, and so now, because we, that little piece of property is totally surrounded by city property. We're now improving Sixty Second Street. Um, we, I sent some letters again, and many of them are here tonight. But I've also been approached by Dan Light, if I'm saying your name right correctly. They want to hook into the city water and sewer also because they have a septic tank that needs, that is failing and needs to be replaced. So, we're back at the same place, the same discussion as we had then, as we're having now. But I think that maybe one of the things the city will need to do, will need to annex them into the community because we're improving Sixty Second Street, which is going to be an improvement to them once the roundabout's open, and they are totally surrounded by city property. The second question becomes whether they, whether you want to go ahead and do sewer and water. Because of the size of the lots and everything is done on frontage footage, frontage, there are expensive assessments that will be there. They're twelve to fifteen thousand dollars on some of them. So, it's, it's a rather large expense. Whether the city wants to do that or not, I, I would think you wouldn't want to. But, um, again, they came tonight because Dan has that issue about the septic tank and wanting to hook into the city sewer and water. So, I guess he's probably wanting to know what we want to do because he'll have to make the big expense of upgrading that septic tank unless we're going to do the water and sewer through that street. So, I provided you with a letter. This is just that I sent to Dave and Holly Colston, but it's the same letter. Everyone got the copy of it and the list of the ads, the people that I sent it to. So, um...
So, because of the size of the lots, the water and sewer hookups are more expensive?
Right, because of price.
For us or them?
For them.
Because to run to their houses.
So, instead of having, instead of having, I'm just making up, I can't think what's a lot? A hundred, a hundred feet? They have two and three hundred feet foot lots and that goes by that. And then you've got to remember that half of it, a quarter of it's owned by us. And the other part, we can't assess to Mayor Luther High because it's of no benefit to them. So, there's fifty percent of it.
It's a density thing, you know.
Yes, fifty percent is out.
There's the more dense, dense of an area you're providing service to, the per-unit cost comes down just by the, the numbers of it.
With the letter that went out, did you include, because there were perhaps, there were some prices that you had given us a while ago.
I didn't send those with them, these.
You did not?
No, I didn't because I just thought that we would just have the conversation, first of all, whether you really want to do it or not. I mean, I can give them to them, I have them before they see all these numbers. And I don't even know if these are updated numbers, do they do?
Well, they're from last, from last fall. But, you know, there's, there's a few, there's pieces of this also, you know. So, we've talked about providing water and sewer. We've looked at it from the standpoint of being able to provide gravity sewer out there. Um, and then we've also looked at an option, just extending a forest main that basically each house then would have their own grinder pump, pump into that forest main, which is similar to what I think Mr. Drew has right now. Um, you know, so some extension of a system like that. Um, the, the other piece that factors in this, what do you do with the road? Right now, it's a gravel road. Are we just putting gravel road back or would that road be upgraded? So, there's just, there's, there's so much, so many different pieces of this. I think we, before you get into, you know, really nailing it down, you have to talk about what exactly are we trying to provide? You know, is it an option to just provide sewer service? If you extend, you know, but far the cheapest way to go would be just to extend that forest main. Everybody put in their grinder pump, pump into a forest main and no water, gravel street back and, you know, that, that, that's, that's a, the most inexpensive way to provide service. But is that, that would be a different service than you provide anybody else in town? Is that all right?
So, um, if you were to go that route, let's say in the future, we want to put water, is that, would, would that affect the future of putting water in and then...
No, I think we, we would set it up to accommodate that. I mean, I think we'd, we'd, uh, we'd plan ahead for that scenario.
Because doesn't water go above sewer?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, now the forest main, we have some flexibility, but we would...
In the ground, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Yeah.
But then again, it really doesn't pay to put a forest main in and not put water in because you can bet the next thing is going to have a sum as well as they're failing. They want to help save water out there.
Yep, so that, that's all, um, that's all part of it, you know. You could put a forest main in, directionally drill it. I, I mean, there, there's all kinds of, of options. So, it, part of it has to be, what is, what ser, what services are you willing to provide without other services? Is it all or nothing? Is there, is it a piece at a time? And, and you're right, the issue we've run into with similar, um, issues here or, or anywhere is the timing is never, seems to be perfect where everybody needs the service at the same time. So, then it gets to be a question of, can every, you know, this is a smaller area. Can everybody kind of come to some agreement on, on, as a neighborhood, what, what their position is, what they'd like to see happen? Um, you're right about the wells. As soon as we don't put in water at the same time, that'll be the next thing, is somebody's well goes. But the issue then is, well, the neighbor just put in a new well last year. This person's well is failing, so how do you, you know?
We never catch up.
It, it never all, all seems to come together at the same time. So, there, there's just a lot of moving pieces of this. So, I think from Luanne and I's perspective, tonight was kind of just start throwing some of these things on the table and, and have a discussion with the folks who live out there to see if, um, if, if there's a next step in this process, there's the information you need and the, the property owners need to kind of keep this moving along. What, what is that information?
I just, I'd say I want to comment, now, let's just have comments from residents. Um, then the next thing is, okay, do we only keep one gravel street in town? Because if, if we annex it, we're responsible for plowing it.
Correct.
I don't think Kyle wants to plow gravel street necessarily. That's...
He's like, "Tire enough, you don't care." I'd say, "You'll see anything." Yeah, I'll do it.
But is, is that, does that make sense, that one gravel street in town?
Mm-hmm.
So, do any residents have anything they want to ask, comment?
I'm over to you, the building owner. I'm just here.
Well, you've already, you've already got city water and sewer?
Sewer.
Or sewer, okay.
Right. And it's only a two inch wide. It's up to you.
Right.
I don't think we can handle any more.
No. The bill's in the city, then that makes everybody totally, we annexed him in and hooked him in. He hooked into the sanitary sewer.
Oh, he's annexed in too?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
So, that's why the rest of the properties are totally surrounded now. Because behind them is, um, Trumpy.
Yeah. Uh, any other comments, questions from any residents? Yes, sir.
My issue is, uh, my stuff that's not failing at the moment, it's not. I just would like to do an addition on my home. So, this is kind of the first, I have no issue putting a loan system or whatever kind of stuff that's just in. I don't want to put it in and then all of a sudden get annexed into the city and have to pay two costs going for loans and then to get up top. Which every way, I'm just looking for the direction of it.
It's unfortunate because he's going to put a new mound in and the new mounds can fail the same year they're put in if they're not maintained properly. You know, they freeze up in the winter. Um, I know several instances where people go south in the winter and when they come back and start using them, they freeze up. So, you know, either way we look at this, it's, it's really hard to justify, you know, the numbers that we have are to provide it down the street. That's not even the connection to the house, correct?
Well, and, yeah, and we, we had, we had estimated both last fall. I mean, if you want me to just give you an idea of what we looked at, just, just the sewer option with, with forest main, if you looked at it on a per-lot basis, it was about fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars per lot. And then, um, it all depends on how you're hooked up, if you already have a grinder pump, all of those things. But then we were estimating, you know, up to potential another fifteen thousand for your internal plumbing running something out to the street. Uh, Mr. Drew probably has more, uh, you know, firsthand information that you can share with his neighbors, maybe that, you know, what, what he had to do. But, um, so, yeah, it, it's, 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 it's from a feasibility standpoint, it's, it's about the worst scenario you can have. But, you know, the homes run it on one side of that street and, and they're large lots, so there's not many of them to share those costs.
So, you gotta, you just gotta upgrade your mound, not the septic tanks?
Uh, I think that has to redo everything.
Everything, yeah. So, you're looking at the fifteen thousand dollars.
So, he's in the boat no matter which way he goes?
Yeah.
If we let him hook up or if he has to redo it. Sorry? Anything?
Well, but...
I'm scouring, I live in a third house down there. Based on who we've talked to besides, uh, Steve and I and Jason Nantin, I mean, we're totally all the same. I already have a new mound system. Spent twenty thousand dollars on it. I don't need sewer. So, I'm sure everybody else still wants to spend thirty thousand dollars to get that. So, I mean, the possibility may be of all, I'm sure, be four and O and four, are part.
Does your, uh, any problems with your wells either? No? Because what was that, fifteen? Was that just for sewer?
Just for sewer. Is it fifteen a lot for just the, what we had estimated to run the, uh, a forest main down there?
When you're talking about doing sewer and water, but, uh, you're also talking about doing tar road?
Uh, the forest main option we looked at, I don't believe that, at that time, that was, that was directionally drilling a forest main. So, we weren't going to do anything with the road. And that was the option, just again, look, trying to look at the least expensive way that we could provide sewer service. Um, the water and the sewer, that, uh, let's try and just look at my numbers here, but that was quite a bit more expensive. Uh, that was with gravity sewer, because if we put in gravity, but that was, uh, more than double. And that included the whole blacktop road. Uh, I think we're around forty thousand for that. Water, sewer, blacktop road.
So, forty thousand for all three, too?
Right.
What have, if, I mean, if we annex these properties in, I mean, you know, we annex them and leave it as it is, but that's, we couldn't do that, right?
Sure. Could annex them in and maybe the only thing you wanted to do is pave the road. And, and, uh, you know, I, I assume if you paved the road, you'd assess that cost. But, um, you could annex them in and leave it exactly as it is.
Right.
So, it could be annexed in, we could pave the road if we want to, make sure it's all, everything's up uniform that way. And I suppose in time, if ever comes upon, if somebody else needs to hook up to the sewer, then it's going to be all or nothing.
Then we tear up the road?
Uh, like they said, directional bore, if you just put sewer, you're directional bore and won't tear up the road then.
Uh, that doesn't make sense to me.
For directional boring, you'd have to be force main direct.
Yes.
You couldn't do that with gravity sewer, with manholes?
No.
Or, or the water main. We, now, you know, we, we have a fairly narrow road out there. Assuming you, you pave a fairly narrow road, you know, you potentially have room to lay something next to the road too, without tearing it up. I think if, if you want that route, you know, you, you would probably look at trying to do some, some sort of a policy where you, all right, you're coming in as is. Everybody's got the facilities, they got some sort of a grace period that if you need to upgrade your mound, we're going to let you do that. But basically, some, there'd be some sunset debt, or sunset date where a, after that point, we wouldn't allow you to drill a new well. We won't allow you to continue to upgrade your septic system that, uh, at some point. And, and I don't know what that timeframe is. It could be a really long time. But I would, I would assume that at some point, as your community continues to grow, that if you're going to have that as part of your city, that you would want them on municipal services. And, and so, you'd have to frame something to try to, if that, that's your goal and, and you want, it sounds like you want the cooperation of the property owners, you have to frame some sort of a policy as to how you would do that and kind of, and bring them in over time with these other services.
With that Trumpy property, if when, when that came in, which is behind there, would there be a way? I don't know if you really want to do backyard stuff, but why couldn't you do it from the back? And then you've got the other side of the, maybe, I don't know how that goofs everything up within Jering, if you can do it.
Well, I think you can...
It depends on how it's laid out.
Yeah, I, I think you can do it, it just gets to be a, an, uh, a long-term maintenance issue as to where you put that stuff, you know. The reason you put it in, in the, the streets is because that's something that you, you have the right to.
Right, the right of the right.
And, and if you have to go in and do work on it, you're not in somebody's backyard, um, doing that work.
But that might be more reasonable, it might make the cost more reasonable, I don't know.
Well, with Trumpy's addition, they'd be using both sides of the street.
Right, right.
When they developed it.
Right, so you, you'd have to bring something down, a side lot line or something, and expand it. And, I, I mean, you could certainly look at that, uh, there, I, just off the top of my head, probably not ideal to do it that way.
What's the lifespan of a, um, septic system? A mound system?
It really depends.
Fifteen, twenty years tops if it's well maintained and in, installed in, you know, good...
And weather can make a difference?
Good conditions, yeah.
Get a deep frost, I mean, a couple of years on the road?
Yeah.
Every time something happens in, in that little group of homes, we, we are going to have someone coming in and trying to see their, weigh their best option. Either hook into us or can we, can we do this?
So, do you put the forest main in and then allow them just to hook in if they need to? Is that what you do?
And, and, you know, so that is, that is another thing to consider from the city's standpoint is, are you, are you willing to carry, uh, do, do make some public improvements and carry any of those costs? You know, kind of basically defer an assessment until a connection was made. Is that, is that okay? You know, that, that's an option, you know, the scenario where, oh, if you got fif, uh, cert, facilities are going to serve you for fifteen, twenty years. But when eventually they, they, uh, are in need of upgrade, that's, that's when you connect to the system that's there and you, you pay a connection charge and, um, and that's how the city reverts.
And do they get annexed in individually?
No, you do, you'd annex them all. I, you could annex them all in.
Yeah.
Put the forest main in with the option that the assessment would come due when they hooked into the system. So, then, then you would, you would, you would, the city would take that over a span of time, I would imagine. So, it might be twenty years before everybody's in, but you provide it.
So, then we would put the water and the sewer in right away in a decent street?
That's up to you. That's totally up to the city if that's what they want to do, yeah. It would be up to you.
Or, you, you know, the, the other, the other option is, you know, the, the philosophy in the past is development out, it pays for itself. That's, that's the philosophy of the city, you know. This isn't necessarily development. Is there, is there any public benefit to the city having money and, and getting this into your system? And to answer the question, I can't answer for you, but at least it, I guess it's something to consider, whether or not it, if it's just from a comparing, comparing a septic system to what it's going to cost to provide them sanitary sewer service isn't equitable? Is the city willing to do something to, to bridge that gap, to, to make the two options comparable?
Well, it's not just us either, it's, it's them too. They're in a conundrum every time something happens.
Yep.
Every time the county changes something, you know, so if a well goes down now, they, so, um...
And, and again, you know, the, it, it, the stars will never align where all five properties are here at the same time with the same need.
Nope, it just won't, it's not going to.
So, that, that's where it gets, the co, the feasibility and, and the timing is, those are the two challenges that you, you probably, if you're serious about it, maybe need some creativity to figure out how to, to develop a policy to deal with those properties that, that is unique to probably just about anything else you deal with in town.
If we were to do your suggestion is, you know, just put the, put street and put utilities in and assess it when they hook up. But then, you know, we put a sunset on that, that with, after twenty years, everybody has to hook up. I mean, that's going to be a timeline.
Yep, whatever.
Ten, fifteen?
Yep, that's...
Or fifteen years, I mean, just figure...
And, and I, and I've seen that before where, yep, utilities go in and basically you, you give somebody a, a date, that January first or whatever is a practical date of twenty twenty or twenty twenty-five or twenty thirty, whatever that day, date is appropriate.
You were saying, Bruce, it's reasonable assumption that these mound systems are good for what, ten, fifteen years, that they need, in major maintenance?
Yeah. Um, and you can tie the future sale of the property.
Yep, that could be another.
You know, so if they...
That'd be another one that...
So, if you choose to sell your property or split it...
Then it has to be hooked up.
Then you can, it has to be paid for and hooked up.
And I, I would think too that you could look at breaking this up some too is, you know, keeping the se, the utility separate. If you were going to provide utilities in the street, the utilities is deferred till the time of hookup and, but the street, there's an immediate benefit. Look at possibly being able to assess that right away. I, you know, because you're, you're providing, uh, something that, some service that doesn't exist right now.
Yep.
Do you guys see any benefit to putting it in now and having it available in the future?
That's probably about the best way to do it, is just have it there and so everybody can hook on whenever, like say, whenever they need or, like, if they're in a failure or something.
You don't want to pay for two working systems at the same time.
Why would you?
I don't agree.
Well, I know, I know Bill had the, where he had to do his, you know, and that, that little pump system that he put in was fairly expensive. You know, so, it just, you got to sit down and work with the numbers.
Well, yeah, and that, that's the, that's the disadvantage of the, the forest main is you, you have, you're going to have a pumping station to make that work. Gravity sewer is more expensive, but you don't have that ongoing piece of the system then, you know.
Uh, forest main, you pay for the maintenance and the pumping and the sewer.
Yep.
Where if you got a forest main, you just pay for the sewer and you're done.
Okay, so what's kind of our, are we coming, bringing this back to the next meeting for action? Or...
Is the group necessarily not opposed to being annexed into the city and having us take over the street and improve it? Is, or is the issue, the assessments and the...
The cost of the...
Of the water and sewer?
So, if you annex us in, just annex us, not use sewer and water and pave the road, should we still think, uh...
You'll be assessed for the road. But we'll be plowing it and taking care of it.
I don't think we'd assess them in and blacktop the road unless we did the sewer improvements.
Annex them in and...
I, I think we do the annexation and then put in all the utilities and, uh, improve the road, but assess it only now for the blacktop.
Right.
And the other assessments would be... We need to set a timeline, figure out a timeline on it.
What Dave was saying with the sunset and the...
Sunset it.
Would the sewer and water mains go down the center of the road easily? So, then if you blacktop it and then we come in and tap it, can we then go to asphalt road?
Well, they put...
We, we would extend this typically the way we do. We put in the main and then we'd extend the service to property line or at least beyond the limits of the road so that, that would be the connection point then. So, yeah, exactly, that you're not digging back into that, um, that new street.
So, is the first step that you want to do, you do want to do annexation then is the first step? And we'll do that and take care of that? And then in the meantime, we can come up with some numbers on street costs and a policy for you to review at another work session?
Yeah.
And then we'll invite everyone back to that work session as you're talking about it and decide what you want to do.
Yeah, I, I do think the annexation we should go ahead with because, uh, simply to straighten out our boundaries.
Yep.
And so, we don't annihilate it. Uh, and then we just need to, like I said, do that first, then come back with an improvement plan.
Yeah, and I think the way we'd handle it, we, whatever, whatever information you ask for, we'd provide you and, you know, as detailed as we could. But, uh, at some point, if we were to move forward, then we'd have to, you'd have to authorize a feasibility study and we'd have to start the, the process by which you could assess some costs then if that's what you ultimately decide is the direction this is going to go.
Right. Okay. Yeah, we don't need a motion, we're just going to, okay. Okay, I'd say that's it. Thank you for your time. We'll keep you informed. Okay, uh, discussion on seal coating, twenty fifteen seal coating.
Um, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, last year, we didn't do a seal coating project. So, this is kind of the, the twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen seal coating. And I provided you with a map that shows what's been done and what needs to be done. Um, I'm just looking for direction on whether you wanted to do a project this year.
I thought we had, only have a maintenance schedule on seal coating that's supposed to be handled.
Yeah, yeah.
I would, to me, it makes sense just to make sure we get, keep maintaining the maintenance.
Did you do it last year? I thought that got voted down.
Right, it did. That's why I'm back here. That's why I'm asking, what do you want to do?
It, just, uh, if, if, in case you're not aware of these areas, some of you I know are. But if you look at the, the Hidden Creek development there, those roads shown in pink, those are roads that had been seal coated in the past, but they're, it's been long enough now where they, they should be redone. Um, and then if you look up in Fieldstone, uh, the yellow area up there, that actually is the second addition of Fieldstone that never has been seal coated. So, that, that's due for its first seal coat anytime. And then the other, uh, piece, what's hard to see on this map, but it's actually Fifth Street between Blue Jay and Ash. Uh, that's a road that, of the side street generally has been in better shape than, than the other ones, just seems to be on a little bit of a different schedule than some. And, uh, that, that, that would be a candidate for a seal coat at some point too. So, just so you kind of know the, uh, the status of those, I guess.
You want us just, if you want us just to do what we were going to do last year and bring it forward for twenty fifteen, that's what we can do. And that would probably make sense because that, I, I think that's the same amount, right, Dave? Where, that you're saying needs to be done.
Well, it, the, the... What was bid last year, or we got quotes on, I believe that was just the Hidden Creek.
Right.
The, the, the roads that are due in Hidden Creek and then, uh, Fieldstone and Fifth Street were just going to be future.
I, I guess, I, you need to do continual maintenance or you're going to get behind and you're going to be paying a whole lot more than if we don't still do it on a routine basis. So, to me, it would make sense to go ahead with the seal coating and that, the parts of them.
Including crack sealing also, just to point that out.
Yeah, and also the, the one in Fieldstone that has not been seal coated. Again, if you don't maintain it, you're going to be a problem.
So, we'll come back with...
Yep.
Um, authorization to advertise for business for that though?
Yep.
Do the same people that do this, I'm sure the equipment is different, but is this the same people that do the trails?
No.
Different thing?
Okay, uh, going on to fire chief, disposal of excess equipment.
Right, it's here. So, he wants to address you about.
Um, we're just about now, today they started doing, uh, making out air packs. So, we're going to be having twenty-two air packs for sale when they come in. If they only give away or whatever you want to do. That's what I'm here to find out the directions of it.
They weren't worth very much, were they?
Um, I had checked into two companies that purchased used ones and then they tried refurbishing and stuff. And they want to take them out so they get one, uh, very good... And they wanna take them out, so they get one, uh, very good at, so, so there's no market for them.
So what are our options?
Um, option would be put them on, um, EJ.
How about the legal?
Try and sell.
What about the legal pa- legal webpage too?
I think that's gonna be, I'm not the most in United States.
Are they safe?
Yeah, they're still, about four and a half years.
Oh.
Um, maybe, uh, maybe two or three, you think for temporary or for any, whatever. And that, I wanna say I, I would, Craig, we have to defer on Craig's, but I don't think that, um, there's not any in Craig's list showing you all those are for sale. EJ, they're, they're across the ten percent.
Does the city get, is there a tax benefit to donating to a, if the city doesn't get a tax write-off for donating things?
No.
Well, that's a good point. Absolutely, it's very low pay taxes.
Um.
Sending stuff overseas to donating to fire departments overseas and?
I don't know.
Well, that might be worth looking into.
It, you know.
Do what you gotta do.
Try eBay and maybe a couple hundred bucks for them.
I'd say it's, it's worth a shot on eBay, see what happens.
Does Rich still do that? Auction kinda thing on the internet?
Well, yeah, you go to auction with, you know, you, something like you do, you know, what they call it, like a direct sale or buy as,
Oh.
as price on eBay, you know, as your chance, as a better chance for getting it.
All right, air pack is, do I like restricted sale item? Can I just go buy an air pack from Scott or whoever else? This is a private party?
Well, I, we, this will have to come back to the city council anyway, so you can take action on it and give him direction. So if you're thinking you wanted to do eBay, we'll put it on the next agenda and that's what we'll do then.
Works for me, I, I mean, at least give that a try first of all, and we can, now we can always donate it someplace.
Any idea when the new ones will be?
Could be.
Could be. There is a.
I wanted you to do training and stuff on it, but, uh, probably a month ago.
Okay, I was just gonna suggest there is a Rotti auction coming up if you want to dis- dispose them through the auction.
I, I, I really, I don't think we would get anything from it, you know.
Probably not.
It's too limited a market, I think, you know, I mean, something like that is more special. I think you need eBay to, eBay to, uh, exposure.
You just, you know, just, um, like you say, from the street or like the elevator. Or a migrant or, or doing the elevator or something.
Okay, is any, do you have anything else? Is this that the only thing or?
No, the other thing is, and it, um, how do you wanna handle that? Um, I mean, that probably won't be here till end of May, but advertising it and you, you know, you can put a timeframe as to when it, you know, we could release it. I've looked at a number of different ways. Um, there's a company like this that, you know, they, fire trailer and they put them in and there's three hundred bucks per issue, you know, to advertise it and then whatever you didn't, you know, you just, you get that money. There's another outfit called, um, they do fire tech. They do everything on, um, website, advertising and they give, um, they'll do free estimates. I did do a free estimate with them and they send their own, uh, ten thousand to twelve thousand dollars is what that truck would be worth. To give you an idea for the, um, but then based on, you know, on their deal, they get ten percent. So if you get ten thousand dollars, you get ten thousand bucks, you know.
Haven't we done this before with the truck?
Yeah, we followed the others or?
We did on the legal, Minnesota City's website.
Oh.
No, it's, no, it's, we did it on the smoke heater.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
On the smoke, yeah, okay.
We put it in.
We had really good luck with that.
The smoke heater is no longer.
Oh, bum.
Instead, they have Minnesota firefighters and they do classified IAs in there. Um, smoke heater was one thing. It went to Iowa, um, North Dakota, South Dakota and Minnesota, and Nebraska. It covered those. Um, and then Minnesota firefighters only for Minnesota. But they do have papers in the other, those states that have given them and the ad would cost you, you know, the same amount. Uh, ad is, um, it's ten dollars for the first ten words and then twenty-five cents for the word after that. If you wanna, I don't know, a picture with it costs you another ten dollars.
Was it a once a month thing? Or like once a month?
Uh, yes, once, once a month.
Once a month?
So, an ad like this was forty bucks.
And that goes.
And if you would put it in Iowa and it cost, it'd cost you another forty bucks for it, you can put it in South Dakota, which to me would be, those two states would be beneficial.
That's pretty cheap.
And then you can, and then the next, then we, I would suggest doing like we did on the other one, open it up for bids and see what we get and then put on there that, you know, we can refuse all bids.
Is that something that can be sold on eBay?
Huh?
Is that something that can be sold on eBay?
I don't know.
They have to pay shipping.
What, you, but then you're talking about the ten percent.
Oh, you they get the percentage.
Yeah, there's that gov deals that, how we sold that other equipment too, but that was, there's a percentage that they get too. I could check and see what theirs was.
But I think this kinda goes out to people that need it more and it's, you know, just like the lead.
Yep.
I think it gets a lot more coverage than what you already get.
I think that's a fine deal. We had good luck with it. We got more than what we wanted or thought we were gonna get for that truck the last time, so.
Uh, you suggest to me I should tell it. I'm probably starting to.
Maybe not, how junky was the truck? They probably been fixing it. I wanna hear from you.
We've been looking for you.
Better not.
Okay.
So, should we put that, we'll put that on the council agenda for him to come back and get authorization then to be able to ask all that excess equipment?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good.
For April thirteenth, okay?
Okay.
And I got one more thing, it's, uh, pre-information. Um, tomorrow, uh, well, I applied for a grant for a new EBD 'cause we use a grant in our U engines that's one of PPA, and so I applied from, uh, you know, Austin and so we gave us a, a new EBD and I better go pick it up tomorrow, so.
Good. Very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, avenues of communication with residents.
This was Nikki had asked for this to be on here. So I provided you with the pages from our Facebook that shows, uh, how many people we have on that. And then I provided you with something from, um, Frontier where you can do texting. But I also have another company that would do texting. It's, it's much more money though. So I, I don't know. I just, it's there, so you just got.
Nikki, can you, what, well?
Well, the only reason I said this is, you know, I know what's going on in the city now, just coming to council meetings and now being a council member. But we always are looking for ways to tell people, like with the mayor moxie thing. It was, you know, I sent out an email to all the firemen, wives, auxiliary, and then we got two people from that because they never heard of it. Because just give you that communication and the electric si- electronic sign, I never read. I don't ever hardly drive that way 'cause I come into town seven and I get off here. Um, and I never, I'm sitting long enough to wait and read all the information. And I'm, you know, I like Way Release page and so I'm always, or I, or friends are, you know, they, uh, share it on Facebook, the page, like, oh, we have coyotes or, hey, this is going on in the city or, you know, I just feel like there's so many more avenues. And I, I understand that everybody's on Facebook or on Twitter and I know that there is a fee, um, for things like that, but, um, you know, the mayor moxie we're doing on Facebook, we have a private group and it's amazing on how much.
We have a public and a private group, yeah. A public page and the, just a private group.
And a private, I mean, we don't have to be private, I'm just.
The ones that are doing.
I just, I bring up conversation about, you know, we're a small enough community that we can be a little more unique.
So Wayverly has a Facebook page, other cities do. I mean, we have one. The city of mayor has one. Does anybody ever go on and just like, I mean, it, the problem is, is that it really has to be monitored all the time to make sure nobody goes on there and does something crappy or say something.
Right, I mean.
You know, my damn neighbor loses handle lines in my yard.
I don't, I haven't researched that. I mean, I have somebody, um.
I didn't, I didn't know mayor had a Facebook page. I didn't look this up.
But in order to.
With the city of mayor?
To sit, yep, city of ma- in order to send stuff out, we have to pay because we're a government entity. So we send out a, we send out an alert to people, then you have to pay like.
If you post on Facebook, you have to pay?
Yes, yes, yes. When I post like a message.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. That's why like the city of Chanhassen, they have a Facebook page, but the only time that they post anything is when it's a revenue, something that they're gonna get money for. So they post that there's a community event going on or something that's going on that they know that there'd be a return on that investment. But just to post messages out there, it costs us to do that.
I was just trying to, sorry, if you start thinking, I just think we're, we don't communicate.
Uh, well.
Yep.
Yeah, well, that's.
There's a lack of, not from anybody here, it's just, we don't have the right, I don't think we have the right tools
Yeah, we have Twitter.
to get information to people.
Who'd think they'd take care of it?
It's too expensive to mail things all the time.
People never read it.
And people don't read it. I mean, I wrote only this letter. I looked forward to it.
I mean, it's, I mean, they expect your.
And nobody gets the paper, so, you know, having Kathy do that, I, I couldn't, I don't, I don't, unfortunately don't read the paper.
But, so maybe it becomes a budget item that we say, okay, we wanna advertise on Facebook once a month and let's budget ten dollars a month or a hundred and twenty dollars and maybe we find a place in the budget now and we decide what that message is gonna be every month that we send out to people. And we put like us on Facebook on the electronic sign and, and we try to do a little marketing and get people, or maybe it becomes an EDA thing that the EDA is willing to finance the ten dollars a month for the, for the Facebook thing. I, I don't know with the message.
What do you think it costs?
Ten dollars every time you do it.
Every time you do it? Every time you do it or a month?
Ten times you do, every time you do it. So you'd have.
Do you pay Facebook?
Yes.
Yeah, that's why I.
You just gotta make some money somehow.
Right.
Yeah, I always wondered how.
Uh, you know, I'll, I, I know someone on the Way Release city council, so I'll ask them to see what they do.
Do you saying Shakopee has a nice one too?
Shak- I, I live in Shakopee. I, I follow them on Twitter and they, they, they put stuff out on Twitter and then I was just so enticed too and the mayor of Shakopee has a Facebook page and so he's always.
So does ours.
Posting stuff about, uh, events and.
The city.
Which he could do that.
Things that are going on in Shakopee, so I, I, I'm assuming, you know, his is Mayor Brad Tyback. I, I'm assuming he had, maybe has his own private one too, but I, I don't know. So I don't know if that's a way around, uh, the, the, the posting thing is, or.
That I could do it.
Well, you can do it as the mayor's.
Under the, uh.
You can do it under the city of mayor.
Well, I'd have to be, do it as a city administrator of mayor and it'd have to be my own, have to be my own webs, my own Facebook and then just use it for city stuff.
There, there is another, yeah, we, I, maybe we need to come back to this again or, there's another, I just
Talk about it a little bit.
Heard about this weekend. I went to look up, it's called text signal that you can send text messages out to groups of people.
Yep.
And it might be something to keep on, even, even for some.
Isn't that what this is?
It is and then, and then Jerry told me about the school one, so they actually have a government side too.
Really?
But it was very expensive. But that, you know, like this one with Frontier, it'll take an hour to get a message out to them. It'll take an hour to get a message to everybody.
Yeah, but we don't send urgent messages. We should sometimes maybe, but.
But what if we did? What if we did? Water shortage, snow emergency.
Jerry, what's, what kind of portal does Zion have that the parents all communicate with?
Then it takes an hour.
Yep.
That's Fast Direct, Fast Direct.
So what is, I mean, is that any, can you use that kind of the same way or no?
Yes, that's what, I think it's.
I guess it'd be a matter of contacting that Fast Direct and see if they have some business type thing. That's, that's based for schools. I mean, they do all the grading and everything through there, but, um, there, there's gotta be things that alter it up that are, would work.
I'm sure they pay for that too through software.
Right. So it's called group text. That is the, the government side of the school one that I found out where you can get out the word quickly. So what they're, they're charged is alm- it's tw- one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a year, but the first year price is four grand, three thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And then it's a renewal every year after the twelve fifty. Well, we have all the phone numbers in our system, in our Banyon data system. So in order to be able to, to get information out, this might be another way that we could do it. So at budget time, do we, we put money in for budget for communication? And we use this to do that. And this you can do right from your computer then.
Let's, let's do a little more research on that, see what.
I just think we just need, we just have to have different avenues. So then we can, you know, aver- I mean, mayor moxie, great success, but you can use that as a way to let more people know and, and just the different things, like we're changing the garbage pickup, so it's gonna be ro- wrong on the calendar.
Calendar, calendar.
Or the, yeah, the, yeah.
Right.
I mean, I use that calendar.
Oh, right, cleanup.
The cleanup and so then you can send that message. I mean, I just, I don't, that's my personal, I don't.
And, and maybe, maybe it's something as s- as simple as Twitter. I don't use Twitter. I just haven't gotten into that one because I got enough to others, but, uh, maybe, maybe it is. And maybe it's, I know a lot of people.
I, I use Twitter. I like.
I know a lot of people use it, uh.
That's how I get my news, is Twitter.
Yeah, I, to, to know what's poppin', you know, obviously like who's gonna make.
You'll hear it there first. If something's happening, you'll.
I know, yeah.
Find out on Twitter before anywhere else probably.
I just think there's just different avenues and I think we can just talk about it.
Okay. Let's keep.
So how we can do it?
Let's keep the discussion open and let's, I'll go look up another that I've heard about this weekend and see what.
I can give you.
And if, uh, we maybe check with that Fast Direct, if there's a way to, if they have a, a business side or government side of that, of that site.
And I'm gonna, I, I have a couple of friends. I have a, um, the mayor of Watertown's wife does boot camp here. So I can reach out to them and what do they do for communication? Just get some different ideas and what does it cost? Doesn't hurt to ask.
I can go out on a miss serve too.
Yeah, yeah, why not ask some other local cities? What do, what do they do? What does it cost? Do they find it successful? Do they, you know?
You think of those questions.
I will, I will.
Okay.
Yep, that's great.
Um.
She got a tweet.
Fire chief home, hurry up, yeah.
Use of intern for additional office staff duties.
Okay, so the next two items kinda go together. We, that got put on here because there's an opportunity for the city to be able to apply for an intern through MCMA or we had talked about having additional staff here. So I was gonna take it to the personnel committee, but they wanted input from the city council on which one do you wanna do? Do you wanna do an MCMA intern where we can get matching funds of thirty-five hundred dollars and you have to pay them about ten dollars an hour for going rate? Or what do you wanna do? Do you wanna go ahead and hire the staff? I mean, I, I think it makes sense maybe to do the intern because.
I do too.
How long would they be, how long would they be here?
Then in the fall. Probably as long as we would pay them and as long as we want them here.
Ten percent stage they are in their education too.
Okay.
Right.
What would they do?
I think, well, they would have to parkour probably. They, they would shadow me and do some of the stuff that I do. And then, and then if by fall they're gone, then we're back to where it's gonna maybe be slow again. We don't need the additional staff and we can just go through the winter again like we have.
Or we just go through a process of hiring somebody.
Or, or if we need to, yes.
So in summer, what's the difference? Just 'cause I haven't been here, like, why is summer busier for staff?
I think it's building permits. We get a lot more buildings.
Okay.
And parkour might be doing more things or we, you know, there's just more activity.
Oh, yeah, no, I think it's a great idea. I just was curious on.
Sure, typically more meetings. I think planning commission starts, probably starts up and.
And probably.
Everybody hibernates in the winter and comes out in the.
Yeah, because they can't build and do stuff in the night.
So if we put this on the next agenda, that's still enough time for the deadline to.
The MCMA one, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, let's put this on this, on the next agenda then.
Okay.
That'd be, yeah, it'd be, or before the April tenth deadline. Okay, and.
No, it won't be, Jerry.
What's that?
It won't be before the April tenth deadline, but I can just go, I'll just go ahead and do it and then get your approval after the fact. Is that okay?
Okay. Yep.
April tenth deadline. You're just telling me it's okay then?
So then you're not sending this job description, right? You're gonna tailor it?
Well, ta- well, right, what I'll do is I see that, um, city of Mankato and Waconia are doing this. So I'm gonna get their, I'm gonna get their job descriptions from them, what they have for that.
Okay.
Yep.
Just make sure it says attend park and planning commission meetings 'cause I, I don't think that's on yet.
No, I'm, yep.
And then there's some other things that they wouldn't be responsible for that we can cross off there.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Okay, then if nothing, we stand adjourned.